Welcome, everyone. And today is November 1st, 2022. This is our regularly scheduled meeting of the Cupertino City Council. If you could please join us in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everyone. Madam City Clerk, if you could please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Thank you very much. Our first item is under ceremonial matters and presentations. The subject is the consideration of a proclamation recognizing November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. I'm very pleased to have a member of the El Camino Hospital Healthcare District Board here with us, Julia Miller. And so if my fellow council members and city manager can join us on the dais along with Board Member Miller, we would be delighted to present this proclamation in honor of Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Absolutely. So, everyone, Julia Miller of the El Camino Healthcare Hospital District Board, and we're very happy to have you here today. I'm going to go ahead and yield the floor to you, Julia, and I understand that you have some remarks that you'd like to provide for this proclamation.
Thank you very much, Mayor Paul and council members. It's my privilege to be here tonight as Chair of the El Camino Healthcare District Board and accept this proclamation. Let's hope someday lung cancer is a condition of the past, but until it is, you should be aware that El Camino Health houses one of the most advanced pulmonary healthcare centers on the West Coast. Our lung specialists are leaders and innovators in the field who specialize in advanced memally invasive techniques to diagnose and treat lung cancer conditions, including lung cancer. I won't go into all of the issues that we do, but we have 30 fellowship programs in the country for innovantialist pulmonology and share our expertise while training the next generation of specialists. So, this is very special to El Camino Health. Thank you very much, Mayor Paul.
Absolutely. And we're so very pleased to be able to raise the awareness for lung cancer. I know that it's a devastating disease. Thank you very much for everything that you and the hospital district does in order to make sure that we're combating this while hopefully we're in the process of eradicating this terribly debilitating and fatal disease. So, here is the proclamation, and so we'll go ahead and present it. Thanks, everyone. And our second ceremonial matter is a proclamation recognizing November as National Native American Heritage Month. I had the great honor of meeting one of the local chieftainesses of a Native American tribe. It was the Moakma Aloney Indian Tribe. It was approximately a year ago, and I'm very pleased to be able to welcome her back. Her name is Charlene Nijma. And Charlene, thank you very much for being here with us this evening. You are on Zoom, and so we're back on our dais in front of our cameras from the council. Chief, would you like to say a few words with regard to this proclamation?
Yes, Mayor Darcy. I appreciate and I'm honored to be present via Zoom to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Moakma Aloney Tribe. And I would also like, if I can, to share a brief historical background of the Moakma Aloney Tribe. The Moakma Aloney Tribe is comprised of all the known surviving American Indian lineages aboriginal to the San Francisco Bay region. And all our members trace their ethnohistoric origins from the indigenous tribes of the San Francisco Bay Area region who were living on the land that had continuously been occupied since before the mission period. And then upon arrival of the Spanish in the late 1700, all the Moakma Aloney members were involuntarily confined at the three Bay Area missions, and that was Mission Dolores, Mission Santa Clara, and Mission San Jose. And after the secularization of the missions in 1834, most of the mission Indians who were rounded up from outside the Aloney-speaking territories left the area, returning to their non-Aloney villages. But those who remained in the former Aloney-speaking territory coalesced into a distinct community, living on two Indian rancherias in Pleasanton and Niles, where they were able to revive indigenous cultural practices, such as sweat lodge and ceremonial dances. These two Indian rancherias were very close to each other and formed a single distinct community that was well-known locally. In 1906, the Moakma Aloney ancestors were included in the congressionally mandated Kelsey Census of Landless California Bands in Need of Land. And although the tribe was referred to locally by many names, like Mission San Jose Indians, Pleasanton Indians, Aloney Indians, it was evident that no one from the Indian agency did any research or interviewed any of the members, since without informing the tribe or anyone else, in 1914, they labeled the tribe Verona Band after a nearby railroad station. The tribe was listed in 1914 and again in 1927 on the list of tribes to receive land. However, after 1927, without the benefit of a site visit, an Indian agent reported our tribe was not in need of land and removed the Verona Band from the list of tribes to receive land. So, these two errors by the Bureau of Indian Affairs of mislabeling the tribe Verona Band and refusing to buy us a land base that was mandated by Congress was the beginning of our political erasure. Moakma Aloney, like many tribes, have struggled to keep from being marginalized, forgotten, and culturally erased. This was not an accident of history. Extermination of our language, cultural practices, and religious rights was the government's policy for decades. We have just begun the healing of generations of trauma, and we are just now finding our voice in the conversation of where and how we fit into the diverse communities that surround us. Proclamations and land acknowledgements are so important for the healing process. They recognize the existence of our people, not only that we were here in some distant past, but that we're still here today stewarding our ancestral lands, preserving our connections from past to future generations. Proclamations and land acknowledgements also recognize and show appreciation for the contributions our people have made to our shared history. I'd like to thank you, thank the Cupertino City Council for recognizing the Moakma Aloney Tribe tonight and opening space to hear our story. So, thank you all.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Charlene. And if we could look into the cameras for council and the city manager, I have your proclamation, which we will mail to you, Charlene. And if you could look into the camera for your Zoom function for a moment.
Do I look to... Should I put some light on?
If you have some light, that would be good. I think that would be...
Oh, there I am.
There you go. And Councilmember Willie, did you want to activate your camera as well? No worries. There you go. Okay, great. And so we'll grab a screenshot of this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, everyone. And we are on to our third proclamation. And the third proclamation this evening is Veterans Appreciation Proclamation, honoring our veterans and military families. And it is with great pleasure that we have tonight Colonel John Swenson as well as a beloved member of our military family, Dennis Whitaker, as well as our Cupertino family. And so let us go ahead, my fellow council members, as well as city manager, and join the Colonel and Dennis on the dais. And so I believe it was Colonel Swenson who would like to make a few remarks first.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'm John Swenson from DeAnza College. I've worked in Cupertino for 34 years, and Dennis Whitaker is with me. We're both veterans of Vietnam, and Dennis is a Cupertino resident. We want to thank you so much for your support and invite you and all the citizens of Cupertino to our Veterans Celebration on 11 November at the Cupertino Veterans Memorial in Memorial Park, right across from DeAnza College. It may not be known, but this was the nation's first memorial to Afghanistan. And as far as I know, it's the preeminent one. Sadly, Sandy James, our president, is leaving, so Dennis and I are trying to fill in. The theme this year is Gold Star Families, like the Axelsons. And we will hear on that subject from Major General Mike Myatt, Marine Corps retired, also speaking a former Navy SEAL who will speak on the meaning of sacrifice. We have the full support of the Cupertino City Government, headed by City Manager Pamela Wu and Parks and Rec's Department headed by Rochelle Sanders and Sonia Lee. We're looking forward to great support from Randolph V. Ihar of Parks and Rec. The mayor, the Honorable Mr. Paul, and President Lloyd Holmes from DeAnza will issue greetings. The West Valley Community Band and a choir from Miller Middle School will also attend and perform. Dennis will play his tuba, I mean his trombone. We will also honor Ginger Nelson Jacobson, a World War II Navy veteran who lives in Cupertino and turns 100 years this month. We have support from Central Fire, Santa Clara County Sheriff, DeAnza College veterans, Boy Scouts, and Patrick Aaron's, all much appreciated. I also want to mention that the Cupertino City Post Office has, by federal law, been renamed the Matthew G. Axelson Cupertino Post Office thanks to the efforts of Congressman Ro Khanna. Renaming ceremonies will be after the first of the year, and we will let you know. Since Sandy is not here, I want to mention we will also be honoring her. And Dennis will cover whatever I have missed and tell you about Rees Across America.
Thank you, Colonel. I'm a proud resident of Cupertino for 48 years. I served in the U.S. Army at Fort Ord, Fort Benning, and in I Corps, northern part of South Vietnam, from February 28, 1969, to November 18, 1971. That was a short 33-month, where John spent over 25 years in the service. He's a West Point graduate and did two tours in Vietnam. I wanted to mention a little reference about veterans. Since 1776, only 1% of all Americans ever put a military uniform on. And out of that 1%, only 1% of them ever served in combat. And I would also like to give you a well-known definition of a veteran. A veteran is someone who, at one point in their life, wrote a blank check made payable to the United States of America for an amount of up to and including their life. This is an honor. Veterans are gratefully acknowledged three days out of the year on Memorial Day, on Veterans Day, and Rees Across America Day. I invite all of our citizens and others to our Veterans Day Celebration, November 11, at Cupertino Veterans Memorial at Memorial Park. And please consider also joining us at Rees Across America on December 17 at the Gate of Heaven Cemetery. We greatly appreciate our relationship with the city since they let our veterans' memorial be on their soil and our partnership with the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. Most important, we wish to thank Sandra James for listening to constituents while mayor of Cupertino, envisioning what could become a wonderful memorial, planning, organizing, seeking funds, and for overseeing the entire Cupertino Veterans Memorial project to completion. Moreover, Sandy has organized, planned, presided over successful annual events for nearly two decades. Sandy put her heart and soul into this project, and we veterans are extremely grateful for her going over, above, and beyond the call of duty. Sandy has also emceed our Rees Across America event starting from the very beginning six years ago, and she's going to be our emcee this year as well. I would like to request the city council publicly acknowledge the support for Veterans Day and Rees Across America, and please consider thanking Sandy for her giving to her community. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much, Dennis. Thank you, John. And on behalf of the council and community, we extend our heartfelt gratitude for all of your service and protection of our great country. And Dennis, I think that it's excellent that you bring up the recognition of former council member and mayor Sandy James, because I think my fellow council members would be more than happy to provide that recognition at this upcoming Veterans Day ceremony next Friday.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. And so, absolutely, and let me go ahead and provide that proclamation. Thank you, everyone. And so at this point, because we are still practicing social distancing, we're told that there are a confluence of factors that could be affecting us in this season. We're going to go ahead, because we did have some ceremonial items where people wanted to accept the ceremonial matter live, we are going to go ahead and take a 15-minute break at this point so that a couple of our council members can go back and take the meeting from Zoom. And there will be three council members, per our usual practice these days, from the dais. And so it stands at 7:04. We will go ahead and reconvene at 7:20. Thank you very much. We'll see you then. We are now on postponements and orders of the day. Does anybody from staff, Madam City Clerk, have any requests for rearranging the order of our agenda or postponing any items that are on the agenda?
No postponements or requests, Mayor.
Okay. And let me go to my fellow council members. Either a show of hands in Zoom or through dais indicator, any postponements or orders of the day requested here on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I will go ahead and move on to oral communications. And oral communications is the opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item that is not on our agenda but is something that could be considered by the Cupertino City Council. And so for this item, we have typically... I noticed that there are a number of people that are here tonight to speak. And so what we have is the ability to speak on oral communications for up to three minutes. We go to the Zoom function first, and then we go to the blue cards live. And then if there are any emails that come in to cityclerk@cupidino.org during the time that the first person is speaking, we will go ahead and read up to three minutes of those comments into the record. I'll be keeping an eye on our time. I want to make sure that we're able to get through the entirety of the agenda. If it looks like it's going a particularly long period of time, then we will invoke the end of the agenda, which is oral communications continued after the enumerated items on the agenda. And so with the volume of people, we do ask that you be succinct. And if that is something that we can extend as a courtesy to our fellow members of the public in order to ensure that we're able to hear the people that would like to be heard during oral communications, that would be greatly appreciated. And so in the Zoom function, I have a number of people, and they are Munni Matipatla, Sashi Bagur, Siva, Tessa Parish, Eric Crouch, someone named Colin User1, Jennifer Tej Kohli, Ivan Thorstensen, Alexander Peeb, Sean Hughes, Yukoshima, Sung Ming Egan, Genevieve Kolar, Shivani Kavaluru, Kamya Mashian, Nitu Kohli. And on blue cards, I have a number of these as well. And I'll go ahead and read those off. But again, in the interest of time, what we might end up doing is continuing the oral communications to the end of the agenda, depending on how we're doing on time. We're at 7:23 right now, and so let us go ahead and call on our first Zoom speaker. That is Munni Matipatla. And a reminder to our members of the public, as well as people that are on Zoom live or planning to send an email during the first person's speaking or during the first three minutes, whichever is longer, please have your Zoom hand up or your blue card in or your email in during this time. Welcome, Munni. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and the City Council. My name is Munni Matipatla. I'm a Cupertino resident and a Planning Commission Vice Chair as well. I'm speaking here as a resident representing myself. I'm concerned about the amount of misinformation being spread by the ex-mayors under the name of, you know, Council of Mayors. I thought there is only one mayor at any given time in our city. That is Mr. Darcy Paul. I did not know there is a Council of Mayors. I don't remember voting for such entity. Who are they? One of their allegations is that this council is alienating nonprofits. I think they are being dishonest with that comment. There are all kinds of nonprofits, such as, you know, 501(c)(3) to 501(c)(6). 501(c)(3) is a nonprofit that benefits the community at large. A good example of 501(c)(3) is West Valley Community Service. 501(c)(6) is a nonprofit to benefit their members. A good example of that is Chamber of Commerce, which advocates for its members. These two are not the same. Unfortunately, these Council of Mayors seem to be confused about it. Hopefully, someone educates them about it. I like what you are doing in treating these entities differently. I would like you to take it further, to make sure we classify these appropriately and only allocate tax dollars, awards, and benefits for nonprofits that are serving the community at large, not the advocacy groups. Also, make sure to filter out nonprofits without an EIN number. We don't know what they are doing with the money they are raising, and we don't know what they are doing with the tax dollars that we allocate. Right? If a nonprofit cannot produce, you know, reports of, you know, how they spend the dollars that they got from the city, we shouldn't be allocating any dollars to that nonprofit. So, you are allocating our tax dollars. So, please, you know, treat it carefully. And I really like, you know, what you're doing, you know, so far. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much, Munni. And I'll go ahead and go on to Sashi. And time about a minute of her time for people to get their hands up, as well as the blue cards in. And I'll check in with the city clerk after Sashi's comments. Welcome, Sashi Bagur. You'll have up to three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay, excellent. I would like to get a little bit more time. I have two other people there. That is Tej and Nitu, who would like to give me their time. Is that okay? And the timer seems to be working as I speak, but...
Yes, the video could pause the time. So, Sashi, to consolidate time, you get two minutes each of other people's time. So, you had indicated Tej and Nitu. So, that would put your total time for six minutes. But Tej and Nitu would not have time after that.
Yes, I understand that.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Paul, for giving me this opportunity to speak. I just first wanted to let you know that I'm ever so thankful for everything the council has done in the past four years. There's a long list of things that you guys have achieved for such a short time. I'm especially surprised at, as, you know, you know, the list keeps growing each time we look at it. It's not just the on-demand shuttle, micro-shuttle. It is not just the McClellan Ranch Community Garden that was done under budget. It was not just the environment and bird-friendly building standards that you've adopted. It's, you know, there's a long list, as I said earlier. I'm especially thankful for the effort that you have put and the consideration that you have taken in making sure that all reasonable developments that were brought before the council were approved. This is one of the most important things you could have done for the city. The city is always changing. There's always expected change. There has to be development. And you've considered every reasonable thing. You've taken into consideration whether it applies to the neighbor. The neighbors have issues with it. You've made sure that, you know, the, all the environmental requirements, any site cleanups that needed to be done have been done by the developers. You've taken care, and that's the important part. And that's the job I expect of a council. I expect this out of people I've elected, because I expect you to be responsible and do things for my sake, because I can't be doing it for everybody. I'm most, I'm most, most importantly, for a small city with reasonable resources, if we don't, if we just keep building without thinking about things, we land up with, you know, overcrowded schools, the case of terrible traffic, and all of the other issues, you know, infrastructure that doesn't fit the population that it is there. I'd especially like to thank you for the opportunity that you took and you put into the, put into the housing elements. Your thoughtfulness there has made a big difference. I'm very glad that you've kept in mind all the pipeline projects. A key distinction that a lot of people don't seem to understand is, as a city council, you can only approve the projects. You have no way of pushing the developer to get the permits or to move forward. Case in point, SP 35 project at Valco doesn't need anything from you. He just needed to do the site cleanup. They've been fighting that for what reason? I don't know. I would not like any house built on a site that needs cleanup. I definitely would not like to see a BMR housing. Just because some people are down on their luck doesn't mean that they should be in a position where they have to be on, you know, contaminated site. That is so unfair. That is so mean. That is so not, I would say, American. So, this distinction that people don't seem to understand, that you can only approve, but you cannot force people, force developers to build something, is, is not something a normal person who's not following city council agenda on a regular basis will understand. So, they think, why is the city using pipeline projects? Well, it makes sense to use pipeline projects. These people can, any day, build what they're supposed to. In order for them to build, they have to make sure their monies are in line. They're, they need to make sure their return on investment is happening. There are so many decisions that need to be made. One curious thing I would like to also point out is I was looking at the written communications, and it looks like one person wrote the email, and a bunch of them have copied it. Was it group thing, or they copied? I don't know. But that aside, I think it is most important for us to not only have single-family homes and for-ownership homes, we must have all kinds of opportunities. We need to think out of the box. Do we need to give apartment owners some kind of a tax break? I am not the expert. I'm just throwing some ideas out there of how to have affordable housing without just build, build, build. How do we get affordable housing? How do we get affordable housing for service personnel, for police, for firemen, for teachers? None of us have any objection to all of these people living in Cupertino. We just don't want a situation where we just build and the developers are making money. Nobody is people, people that need to be here are still locked out of this. So thank you for your thoughtfulness in considering this and giving the opportunity, most of all for giving the opportunity to the community to be able to weigh in on the housing element. That was very, very important. Actually, interestingly enough, in nearly all of the emails, they've made a point of saying that they are, that there was nothing wrong with what you did in that respect. So you've done very well. Of course, not everybody agrees with your decision. That's expected. This is a democracy. So people will have opinions that are quite different from what, you know, I have or a bunch of people, a bunch of others like me have. So it looks however, from what I can see from the written communications and perhaps, I can't see the hall, but I would suspect there's a whole bunch of them there. It looks like everybody that disagrees with you seems to have assembled or written, assembled at the city hall or have written to you at the city hall. So in the city of 30 K voters, there are many that agree with you. I'm sorry, all of them are not there. I'm also sorry that they have not written to you. But on their behalf, I'd like to thank you all in the council for all the great work you're doing. Hang in there, you'll get a lot of criticism, but that'll only improve us. I will do well. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, Sashi. And so during the time I was checking through the city clerk, the blue cards, we do have a couple extra. And so I count 31 between the Zoom hands and the blue cards. And Madam City Clerk, I didn't want to email during this time that Mooney was speaking and Sashi was speaking.
Yes, Mayor, I did receive two emails.
Two emails, okay. So that should be 33 total. We'll do our best, but again, in the interest of time to, you know, make sure that we get through the business of the public, we may need to put the remainder of the oral communications back towards the end of the agenda where it's listed after the enumerated items. So, but we will do our very best here. And so our next speaker is Seva. Welcome, Seva.
Hi, this is, can you hear me?
Yes, you're audible. Welcome.
Oh, thank you. I want to talk about a homeless person on the, at the intersection of Stevens Creek and Hotel. I want to thank the entire city council for listening to us and understanding the issue. And especially thanks to Mayor Paul and Council Member John for coming to our neighborhood and listening to our concerns. As you heard, there is a serious concerns about kids' safety. They are walking by near her and the concerns are that she is sometimes untrussed or doing something that is not appropriate for the kids. That is one concern. And my concern is that it is getting dark and we are losing the daylight savings time and it will be dark and there will be a safety for, for the person that is there and also the safety for others. So with that one, I wanted to request the city council to consider the situation at hand and do the needful. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Seva. And our next speaker, one moment, I need to get back to my Zoom function here. Our next speaker is Tessa Parish. Welcome, Tessa.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Mayor Paul and Vice Mayor Chow and council. I'm calling today because I just wanted to, with the housing element, validate you all. I've, I've been around, I'm actually Chair of the Housing Commission and been following this closely. I'm here only speaking as myself tonight for myself. And I've watched you guys, I've watched the staff, hardworking staff. The Planning Commission has submitted, the Housing Commission, Staff Member as well has been very hard at work. Every time it needs to go to council, council has met. I have seen everyone work as fast as possible and we've, we've had countless hours of meetings. And so I just wanted to validate you at the last meeting as well. Planner Pew said that down south, she went to a meeting that Cupertino was being talked about in a, in a good way, in a good light, as indicating that we were doing one of the best jobs for fair housing and being used as an example of what to do. And so I really appreciate that you guys are taking the time and to do it right and doing the proper due diligence. If the Planning Commission is doing what they need to do to do everything right. And so if there's any criticism, as, because I quickly have seen a few on Nextdoor, I invite all the public that are questioning your competency and efficacy on this to watch the meetings and see if there's anything else. I mean, it has gone, we've done the best, I think, and the staff has done the best. You guys have done a great job. And I'd rather it be done late than done incorrectly. I have heard that other cities have submitted on time, but have been rejected. And so again, you're doing things as you've always done, methodically and carefully. Thanks again, and that's, that's all I wanted to say. Good evening.
Thank you, Tessa. Next we have Eric Crouch. Welcome, Eric.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eric Crouch. I immigrated to Cupertino when I was less than a year old, grew up in the city and hope to return there once I graduate from law school. I love Cupertino. I'm forever grateful to the community that gave me the opportunities to be where I am today. And that's why it's so important to me that other families get the chance to move to Cupertino and take advantage of the opportunities that I had. So when I heard that Cupertino was dead last in its housing element process because we haven't created a plan to create our fair share of housing, I was incredibly disappointed. This of all communities knows how important it is to be a place where families can come and build a life together. And when we don't build enough housing, that dream becomes impossible. And as a law student, I'm also worried about the liability we're exposing ourselves to by not being on track to produce a compliant housing element. Cities in Southern California are experiencing the builder's remedy now and we can see what it's like to lose land control use because of bad planning. While I support developing the city, I want residents to help direct that development. I want community feedback from homeowners, renters, students and daytime residents alike about what the city should look like in the future. With a non-compliant housing element, we lack that say. So please, Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow and Council Members Way, Moore and Willie, please do what you can to make sure Cupertino has a compliant housing element by the state deadline. And please make sure that we take our fair housing responsibility seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Our next speaker is a phone speaker under the designator Colin User One. And so Colin User One, you'll need to unmute yourself to be heard.
To council's audience and city residents and guests. Um, actually, we appreciate it. Actually, some member does, I try to help. We saw this try to phone some committee for the legal ad. And the, for, for, and the city commission is for the organization, for the servants, for the residents, as a long-term residents, we actually involve quite a bit on community service, but literally we can't even sleep because the tragedy, even the city told us what to do and we followed and they stood, not without notice, took the property, we took the belonging way, even we have symbolic permit and the system doesn't work. And we wanted a third party, so who we can, we can speak to. We asked many times, we still haven't got it. And again, we actually have friends in the different city, state government agency. And this is actually one of the most malicious process they tried to do to us. The, for the city and most residents actually is well behaved, like us, we tried to ask every time whatever step we should do and we still got this kind of consequences. And all this, the process, all this system doesn't work. And if you need to be, if you need to change the code and also you have so many codes and still don't have a due process and the system doesn't work, the code doesn't work and whoever in charge of this, a few people, whoever, what the purpose they have, it doesn't work. So we sincerely request have a due process, have, have somebody and a third party. And if you guys can't have it, we'll provide the third party and also many retired person and who work for as a bridge. And so we're not have this one-sided and no, no due process for so long. And, and also we do see a few steps are taking. And also I'm actually volunteered to be subcommission for the health that residents. And feel free to reach us if anybody, we have this city comments out there. Anybody can help our situation and please feel free to reach us. And we're, thank you for, and council and also members and whoever listen to or try to be. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much, Colin User. And so I'm going to go ahead and read off who we have. And I do thank people for, for being efficient with their remarks at this point. I will try to make sure that everyone gets heard at this time. But our remaining names on the Zoom function, Jennifer, Yvonne Thorstensen, Alexander Peeb, Sean Hughes, Yukoshima, Sung Ming Egan, Genevieve Kolar, Shivani Kavaluru, Kamya, someone named Mashin, maybe I didn't write that down in my, Kamya Mashin, okay, so that's first and last name. San R and then Stephen Scharf, followed by blue cards that are from Julie, I apologize if I'm not reading this right, Moncton, I think. Amy DeBates, someone, Affordable Housing for Deansa College Student, Edwin Castillo, Jean Zhao, Rhoda Frye, Lisa Warren, Joseph Floran, Jean Bedord, Connie Cunningham, Emma, Neil and Gilbert Wong. And then I believe, Madam City Clerk, you stated there were two people on email and who were those?
Yes, Mayor, Stanley Young and Caitlin Wong.
Okay, great. So that'll be the order. And so next we go on to Jennifer. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin and I just wanted to talk about the housing bills that the governor has been signing. He signed three, 30 housing bills two weeks ago. And I am really concerned that, why are we in such a rush to do this? Does that mean that four years from now, when we get a new governor, that that governor will not see the haste to sign all these housing bills? I was talking with an elderly neighbor and trying to explain the housing bills to her and she was completely confused. And she said, why is he, why are they passing so many housing bills? And I said, I honestly don't know. I have never seen anything like this. I'm beginning to think that any of the assembly members and the senators that have been passing these bills and sending them on to the governor, that they are under a rush. They must be concerned that if they go out of their, their housing, their, their party, you know, they're either not reelected or they have someone else come in, that, that nobody's going to be there to pass these horrific housing bills along. I, I, you know, I hate to see the public deceived. They are confusing the elderly. I have never seen in my life anything like this barrage of housing bills being passed. As a member of the public who has tried to follow these bills for the last five years, I can tell you, I can't even keep up with these. And as I have said before, AB 2097, which is Laura Friedman's parking bill and AB 2011, which is Buffy Wicks, let's build whatever we want to in commercial, they have references at the bottom to other housing bills. And it's like it was a secret code. If such and such gets passed, then AB 2097 and the housing element bill will be passed. What the heck are we doing? Is this like a secret coded war that the public doesn't know anything about? I am really sorry, but I really think that there is an attempt. We, we thought that January 6th was bad at the Capitol. What the heck is Sacramento doing to try to deceive and confuse their public? I saw at a meeting in the housing bills in the last, it was in our city council chambers, I saw a senior confused and scared because they didn't understand these laws. That is no way to run any democracy in this state. And I am not voting for Gavin. I'm voting for Mr. Dolly. My grandmother was from Latin. And I, I sure hope Gavin is not thinking he's going to cart this baggage to DC. It stops in California. Please don't vote for our governor if he's signing.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Yvonne Thorstensen. Welcome, Yvonne.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I, I'm a mom and a longtime Cupertino resident. I got involved with the housing element process because I came to understand that the lack of affordable housing is at the root of so many problems in our city. It causes people to drive long distances to get to work and increases traffic when people can't live near where they work. It has prevented new families from moving into Cupertino and reduced the number of new students and caused our neighborhood school to be closed for lack of enrollment. In addition, the lack of young people living here makes it difficult for small businesses to survive when their customers leave town in the evenings and the weekends. We need to honor the housing element process urgently because we live in an interconnected world. We can't afford to continue the isolationist attitude that has generated so many negative headlines about our city. At this point in time, it's irresponsible to continue to litigate in court to defend our right to do nothing. It makes no sense because it's expensive and the alternative is so much better. All of the best creative ideas in history have come from reasonable people having reasonable disagreements. Our city will be better in the future when we create a housing plan with input from all of the beautiful diversity in our community. Developing a housing plan is a critical role for every city government and Cupertino is no exception. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Yvonne. And next we have Alexander Peeb. Welcome, Alexander.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Alexander Espinoza Peeb and I'm calling in as someone who grew up in Cupertino, attended Garden Gate, Lawson, Montevista, attended and worked at Deansa and finally have been unable to stay in Cupertino because of the prohibitive cost of living in my hometown. I'm, I, you could refer to me as one of those young person that the last caller referred to, who isn't able to, to stay here. And I'm here because to me, the housing element doesn't feel like a chore to be dreaded, but instead it represents this opportunity. It's a chance for our city to change course, take control, change the narrative of Cupertino from one of inaccessibility and callousness towards any non-longtime homeowner to one where we can shape a city that welcomes students and our renters and teachers and the people who work here. And come February, the builder's remedy is going to kick in and we're going to lose that opportunity, forfeiting control to people who won't be able to help us build as sustainably as we'd like or build as specifically as we'd like for the groups of Cupertino that so often go ignored and underserved. I left Cupertino and turned down job opportunities because our cities, of our cities' lack of housing. So to see my hometown about to give up on the largest opportunity they have to make the city more accessible to people like me, isn't something I can stay quiet about and I'm glad that other folks are coming out today too. So I urge you to listen to the diverse voices who have been proposing solutions to our cities' housing issues so that we can continue to have, continue to have a say in how our city is formed rather than have it be formed for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexander. Next we have Sean Hughes. Welcome, Sean.
Hello and thank you for the opportunity to comment, along with many other residents and individuals who care about the future of Cupertino and commenting to express concern with Cupertino's lack of progress and ambition in the housing element process. Just the day I heard of two developments giving context. Just the day I heard of two developments giving context to this moment. The approval of Emeryville's Housing Element Draft and Palata's intention to release a draft element soon. The first proves that we do not have to accept noncompliance as a foregone conclusion, but rather a clear choice made by the current council and their appointees that is putting Cupertino at further risk of state intervention and local development. The second, Palata's intention to put out a draft puts us in dead last of surrounding jurisdictions of the Housing Element process. It did not have to be this way. We know the facts. Cupertino desperately needs more homes. Our Housing Element has problems similar to noncompliant plans. Our timeline for remaining work puts us on a path to noncompliance. And yet we still have time to turn this around, to add more representative community input, to strengthen our site inventory and to bring more ambition around our plan. As someone who's studied environmental policy, denser influence development is the significant, single most significant action our city can take against climate change. And this is supported by IPCC as well. Arbitrary parking minimums and height restrictions have no place in municipal code, at least not one for a city who has declared a quote unquote "climate emergency." We have the transit, some of the busiest VTA hubs at Deansa are long-stalling, and we have the opportunities, one of the most successful companies in the world. And so it is unacceptable to lack the will to have an ambitious and sustainable plan for our city's future. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thanks very much. And our next speaker is Yokushima. Welcome, Yuko.
Good evening, Mayor Darcy Paul, Vice Mayor Liang Tao and council members. Good evening. Um today I received an email about below market rate affordable housing fund availability, available five million dollars next year. And also human services grant funding available the next two years. That's not as big as five million dollars, but it can be as big as a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. That's a lot of money to use for our city. Um I would like to propose building a dormitory near Deansa College, near Whole Foods, near Target maybe. Because many Deansa students, Coot Hill College students are sharing one apartment with six other students. And they are splitting the rent, paying like four hundred dollar each person. Um I think Cupertino definitely need a dormitory for such students. And I think five million dollar is not enough to build a dormitory that can house, for example, fifty residents. Five million dollars is not enough to build a dormitory for fifty students. I think cities' budget should be combined to build such housing because five million dollar cannot accommodate fifty residents. Also, when I hear about below market rate housing in Japan, that actually creates income for the city. The rents become the city's income. So I hope city will consider making a dormitory an opportunity to generate income as well. In regard to human services grant, I think this money should be spent to house unhoused population in Cupertino. There are two different kinds of groups of people unhoused. One, those living in the, sleeping in the
Fifteen seconds.
One, sleeping in the car. And one, sleeping on the street. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Yuko. Our next speaker is Shengming Egan. Welcome, Shengming.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, I hope you're all having a good night. Nice to see you. Um yeah, my name is Ming. I lived in Cupertino for twenty-five years, grew up here, went to Montevista, all that jazz. Um I mostly, I'm here partially because I was really interested in hearing about the SB nine agenda item later today. Um that's something that personally gets me excited uh because I am really interested in seeing more alternative forms of housing here in Cupertino. Um I, me and my mom both have a like a hope, like a dream later on to someday be able to live in a duplex together um or a townhouse. Uh but right now we are living in like a single family home like so many other folks in Cupertino. Um but I really want to encourage the city council to really put effort into the housing element and get that ready uh before the deadline so that we can plan for these kinds of middle housing to be available, to have all kinds of other alternatives, not only for, you know, families like mine, but for other folks who may want to come to the city, um kids who are, you know, aging out of their fam, uh aging out of their family homes and who want to stay nearby. Um I think I hear so much about other folks who grew up here um and can't really afford to live here. And you know, not everybody is able to, you know, stay in their family home for whatever reason. Um I think it's so vital that we are able to kind of control our housing element, that we are able to, you know, address insufficient housing needs in a way that lets us maintain control, um especially since Cupertino has done a ton for Great Lake Trails, sustainability. Um if we do not, you know, do not complete a housing element plan in time, we won't really have as much say over that and we'll be, we'll be giving away whatever, you know, land we have to be forced to build housing instead of planning appropriately for it. Um so please do uh focus on that housing element, get finished and make sure that you include not only just folks who, you know, currently live in single family homes, but also families that could come here um if other housing options were made available and for those who are already here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ming. And our next speaker is Genevieve Kolar. Welcome, Genevieve.
Hi, um thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all. Uh my name is Genevieve Kolar. I'm a former Deansa college student and Cupertino resident. Um I'm here to express my concern about the city's inaction on our housing element update. As a Deansa student, I was one of the many people raising awareness about the impact of the lack of affordable housing on the Deansa community, including local students, employees and teachers. And many of you are current city council members, really receptive. Um however, because of the delay in completing our housing element update, we're risking losing the opportunity to include the needs of the Deansa college community in our housing element plan. And if we lose city control of the planning process, we lose the chance to advocate for the needs of all of our community members. Um when I transferred from Deansa, I transferred into an urban planning program and I learned two things there. Um the first is that Cupertino is notorious throughout the state for um harnessing local control over our housing elements and really pushing to be able to control what we develop, what we build. And I also learned the importance of the Housing Element Update in helping make a community livable and just and just um pleasant for everyone there. Um by delaying the process, um we're not giving um adequate time and we're unable to fully realize the goals of the housing element and take advantage of the control that we do have. And so I really urge you to, you know, press on, to take the time that we still have left before the housing elements do and um use all the community input that you've gathered so far to create a housing element that works for everyone and that will be able to implement um and not lose local control. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Genevieve. And our next speaker is Shivani Cavalluru. Welcome, Shivani.
Hi and thank you. I am also a past Cupertino resident and Lindbergh alum. I'm currently going to law school. I do want to take a quick note and say there's a difference between validation and coddling, which we've seen tonight. You've heard a few of your constituents saying you're doing your best. And if we are to take their claim at face value, then there's a deeper problem worth reckoning with here that your best is not good enough. I understand how painful it is to admit that our best is not meeting the mark, but such humility is necessary in order to meet the demand for building affordable housing plans that move Cupertino forward from the pits of stagnation. If legal bills are not easily understood by laymen, then we can address accessibility, but that alone is not a logical argument to throw our hands in the air and ignore the very pressing need for a housing element. If we continue to help progress with excuses of perfectionism, I'm afraid our leaders are using the same tactics that serial procrastinators do. The future is scary and making mistakes is part of your job. No elected leader can avoid it. Don't let stalling be your legacy. Housing element secures Cupertino autonomy in shaping the lives of everyone. And I'd rather argue in a city council meeting with an apartment over my head than without. If your city is not being built from the voices of its own people, then whose city is this? It's a privilege to keep moving the finishing line forward. Other cities have, in fact, produced successful housing elements and plans. And as simple as it seems, our biggest opposition should not be the internal fear of progress within your own leadership. Please do what you were elected to do and play a role in ensuring Cupertino is a city of its people rather than a housing scarce graveyard that gets left behind while other cities around us evolve. Rise up to the movement and meet it with purpose, not procrastination. Me and a ton of other diverse Cupertino residents are counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Shivani. Our next speaker is Kamya Mashian. Welcome, Kamya.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Uh my name is Kamya Mashian and like many of the speakers here, I am concerned about the city's housing element. Uh our housing element uh is part of a statewide process to ensure that local government provide enough housing to meet the needs of their communities. Given that we're in the midst of a major housing shortage with prices rapidly spiraling out of reach of many residents, I would hope that the city council would take this obligation more seriously. Unfortunately, I worry that this has not been the case. Several other speakers have already outlined many of the the concerns that I share, but I wanted to address a couple of points in particular. Uh unfortunately, I must respectfully disagree with those who have congratulated the city council for its thoroughness in this process. Not only is Cupertino dead last in the county in preparing its element, but it has failed to meaningfully solicit input from the community. Earlier in this process, the council assembled a stakeholder group, but when that group provided feedback that was politically inconvenient, the council dismissed it. I do not think that the city is on track to have a compliant housing element by the January deadline and it does not seem uh that this is because of excessive thoroughness. We have had plenty of time to do this on time and to do it right. I also think that the emphasis on so-called pipeline projects in the draft element is irresponsible. Uh cities in Southern California, which have relied heavily on such projects for their housing elements, have had those elements rejected and are currently facing the builder's remedy. I worry that Cupertino will end up in the same situation and lose uh local control over uh how housing is developed. I strongly urge the council to adopt a housing element with a broad site inventory, not one overly reliant on a handful of infeasible proposals. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kamya. And next we have San R. Welcome, San.
Yes, thank you, Council. I wanna first of all congratulate you. Uh if you have not noticed, you were on the CBS News today evening for some of the best paved roads. I believe you got the top spot uh across the Bay Area for the best paved roads in the Bay Area. So wanted to firstly congratulate you on that timely piece of news. Um I did wanna talk a little bit about the um the conversation that's been going on today in terms of the lack of housing in the Bay, in the Cupertino area. Listening to the various speakers, it would seem like the city council is actually a commercial developer and is in charge of progress on these housing projects. Um what I wanna read out to you today is the Q three twenty twenty-two multifamily report on vacancy and on construction. So I just wanna point out first of all, that if you look at the the absorption rates, the absorption rates have dropped. Second quarter twenty twenty-two multifamily absorption rates were forty-six thirteen units. When you look at third quarter twenty twenty-two, absorption rates are down to two thousand eighty-six units. When you look at cap rates, second quarter twenty twenty-two is four point two percent. Third quarter twenty twenty-two is four point six percent. Now, on the other side, I wanna bring your attention, the office vacancy rate in the Bay Area is at twenty percent right now. And so the problem that we have in Cupertino is actually a problem created by the past city councils in over allocating office space to the limited land that is available in Cupertino. When you look across the different asset classes, you're seeing that retail is at four point four percent vacancy rates. You're seeing that multifamily is at a low vacancy rate. However, when you look at top twenty metros nationwide, for the first time, San Jose has dropped out of the top twenty. And so when you look across the top twenty, San Jose is nowhere to be found. And so it's not the fault of the city council, nor can the city council be held accountable for the rate of progress of delivery of housing units. The city council can only do its job in approving plans that are brought forward to it. Developers are slowing down construction because absorption rates are slowing and because cap rates are rising. And as senior lenders start to withhold their senior loans based on the evaluations and the cap rates. So to all of those commenting today, I just wish to remind that the city council is in charge of approving plans, not for the progress of the housing unit itself. And perhaps if past city councils had done a better job in allocating the limited land available to housing projects instead of all of the office that has been allocated, we may have been in less of an issue today. Thank you for all the work you have done and I appreciate everything the council does.
Thank you, San R. Our next uh speaker is Stephen Scharf. Welcome, Stephen.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Chair of the Cupertino Planning Commission, speaking for myself. I appreciate the city council's diligence and thoroughness in completing the site selection for the six-cycle housing element and exceeding the state's RENA requirement for new housing. If all the sites that are entitled are built, we will increase the population of Cupertino by about twenty percent, including a lot more affordable housing for those that qualify. Under the guidance of our city attorney and acting on the advice of HCD, the sites that were considered were sites where the property owner expressed an actual interest in using their land for new housing. Also, under the guidance of HCD and the city attorney, we, like all other cities in California, are using the pipeline units from the fifth-cycle housing element of approved projects. Yet we could do better in terms of affordable housing. Other cities require BMR units on the density bonus units, as San Francisco has done, which prevents diluting the BMR percentage. Yet when the city council tried to increase the percentage of affordable housing in exchange for a larger density bonus, a YIMBY group at the request of a developer complained to the state that Cupertino was requiring more affordable housing than the state requirement and that ordinance had to be repealed. I've also seen a lot of misinformation being spread regarding something called builder's remedy. Builder's remedy allows developers to bypass the city's zoning requirements and build essentially whatever they want. In Southern California, developers have been taking advantage of this in beach cities that have not allowed high-rise construction in their towns in order to prevent the Southern California coast from ending up like Miami Beach or Waikiki. These new high-rises will fetch very high rents and will be very profitable for developers. But in Cupertino, we have not rejected any new housing projects, whether single-family homes, low-rise apartments or high-rises. Builders have been free to build their approved projects. If the developer wants to use builder's remedy, they will be able to do so. If Cupertino doesn't complete the rezoning of its housing elements in time, but we're hopeful we'll be able to meet the deadline. The reality is developers don't want to build high-rises here. They're extremely costly to construct and they don't generate a positive ROI. Even at Valco, the only reason for the proposed high-rises was to build enough housing necessary to get the one point nine million square feet of office space. We really don't know what's gonna happen at Valco, given the current state of office, excess office space in the Bay Area and in Silicon Valley. Uh we shall see. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Next we go to our blue cards. I'll do a time check. It's about eight ten right now. Um I I will exhort everyone to try to keep your comments brief. We'll try to get through these. At eight thirty, I'll I'll check in with uh the city council again and staff with the time check to see uh what makes sense going forward. I think we have um about fifteen more speakers here. We have live. We have live Julie Moncton, I think, is how it's written, but if it's not, I apologize for that. Come on up, and you can speak at the dais here. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Julie Moncton. I've lived and worked in Cupertino for over 35 years. I have never spoken before at a city council meeting, and I am incredibly nervous, so sorry about that. But as George Shultz said, democracy is not a spectator sport, so here I am. So for the members of the city council, you guys put in a lot of time and a lot of work, your weekends, your nights. It's an amazing gift of time and effort, and I want to thank you. It probably mostly goes unrecognized, so we really appreciate what you do. However, when it comes to the housing element, without mincing words, I feel like you failed. It is clear that February 1st, this housing element has to be submitted, and we are not going to make it, which means that the builder's remedy is going to take effect. Now, Cupertino, whether you're NIMBY or YIMBY or someplace in between, I think we all agree that the builder's remedy is not what we want. As Stephen Scharf has mentioned, it has resulted in some really bizarre building projects that are probably not what Cupertino is looking for. We want to keep control of our development. So I think we will agree that your actions and your inaction has led us to this point in time, and it's the worst possible outcome. We're in election season, and so we know where people stand when it comes to development. But that doesn't matter, because we elected you to complete the building element and not try to follow your own personal vision or your personal agenda, but to really enact the will of the people. We have faith in you. You're smart. You're capable. We know you can do this, but you have to put aside your own personal desires and listen to what the people want. So I am pleading with you to do three things. The first is to put aside your personal agenda. The second is to reinstate the stakeholder group. We'd like a diverse group of people in on this decision. And the third is to follow the state guidelines, accept that the state has given us this, and we need to follow it. This is what we elected you to do. Thank you very much for giving me the chance to talk.
Thank you, Julie. Our next speaker is, I believe, Andy Debates, or Debites. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Debates is correct. You had it the first time. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Andy Debates, 35-year Cupertino resident, speaking about the housing element. You know, I think the, it's clear we all want to maintain local control of what goes on with housing, and a tardy housing plan is going to put that at risk with the builder's remedy. So my request is simple. You know, please put the time and effort in to get us to a housing plan so that we can maintain local control of what goes on with our building in Cupertino. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Andy. And next, we have Edwin Castillo, or Castillo. Welcome, Edwin.
Hello, I am Edwin Castillo from a Renters Rights Group with the Deansay College advocacy group called VIDA. I wanted to talk about how severely late the housing element is and the resulting builder's remedy, which will affect student housing in other vulnerable communities. Because of this negligence, Cupertino will be unable to fulfill housing needs for students. And I think, well, having supporters is always lovely. Your supporters praising your port work for minutes on and resulted in a Deansay student having to leave due to family commitments, and I apologize on their behalf, but I will just be speaking for them and the issues that will take place. I also apologize to the Zoom speakers who wish our city council good luck on submitting on time, but as it stands, almost guaranteed to be late. So for the issues that will happen due to the housing, due to the builder's remedy, we won't be able to get any consideration for student transit needs. I have, like, friends who are sleeping in cars or sleeping in box trucks at Deansay just because there hasn't been any plans to get them affordable housing. I have friends who take up 12-hour transit to school. And Deansay specifically is hemorrhaging enrollment because of housing just too expensive. We've lost, like, 11% enrollment, like, over the past year, and this is largely due to, like, housing just being unaffordable, so that equates to, like, a few thousand students because they just can't live here, and that seems to be likely to continue just due to housing and accessibility. And also to add, I wanted to discuss about your outreach, which you have just very poor in regards to the housing element. You've done, I think Cupertino has done a lived experience advisory committee in which Cupertino tries to collect poorer people to share their experience, to try to inform those who lack this information, but it just seems like mostly just like tossing pennies, just having people, like, speak to, you know, richer people about their experience, but it just really has, like, no actual change reflected. Thank you.
Thank you, Edwin. Next, we have John Zhao. Welcome, John.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Thank you for having me today. My name is John Zhao. I am a longtime resident. I've lived here since I was five years old. Went to Eaton, Lawson, Cupertino. Went off to Stanford for undergraduate, and I graduated from University of British Columbia with a Master's of Community Regional Planning. I was a former Chair of the Housing Commission, and I have quite a bit of experience in planning. And I'm really deeply concerned about the state of our housing element. As you may know, we are guaranteed to trigger the builder's remedy. There's no, there's no actual way around this. Part of this process requires a 90-day comment period. If you check the calendar right now, I believe today is November 1st, and I think 90 days from now puts us at February 1st. And we have multiple steps in between we still haven't done. So for the people who are saying that we will submit it on time, I don't know, like, if you invented a time machine or something, but if you did, that's really cool. I don't think that's possible, though. Okay, so, all joking aside, we need to take this process seriously, and I'm concerned about how the city has been approaching community engagement. And planning should be accessible and inclusive to all members of our community. And we need to incorporate the perspectives of young people, seniors, renters, low-income people, service workers, teachers, not just homeowners. Remember, you serve the community. That does not just mean homeowners, correct? Case in point, I think it's bad practice that for public comment, you're having people who came in person go after people who are on Zoom. And I understand accessibility is important. COVID, you see, I'm wearing a mask, right? And we had, not we, but there was a Deansay student that I was talking to commutes one and a half hours to get here from Barriessa, and they had to leave. Why is it that we are running public processes this way? I'm concerned that the housing element is not on this agenda, and we are really behind. So just please take this process seriously. We need to act with urgency and the attention that it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Our next speaker is Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
It's usually, I'm not quite prepared. I've got three items. I've seen a number of mimeographed emails about the housing element. Having attended a number of the meetings that were relatively poorly attended, I was impressed by a housing commissioner's thorough analysis. There is some criticism coming from a small radicalized group about the process, such as including pipeline projects. The public should know that the city consultant and staff condoned pipeline projects, which keeps us out of a bind later on. Number two, regarding Lehigh, there's a picture up there. They've got new use up there, making Hollywood movies. The lights are blinding to drivers and intrusive in homes. The sheriff told me that they have a fire, they got a fire permit, but my calls to the county code enforcement, planning, and Supervisor Smidien's office were unanswered. Did they get a use permit? Why didn't they do the courtesy of contacting our city? Okay, and now for number three. Okay, where's my number three? Okay, about hazmat. So, you know, we've got hazmat at Valco. There's dust flying around and shredded tarps, and people who work and live here could be harmed. Please have them replace the tarps, implement effective dust suppression and post warnings. A couple of years ago, I was in a BAC mid-meeting with residents from Bayview. That was the topic. And I will tell you that they've got generational cancers. It's just, it's horrific. And I was glad that I was on Zoom because I would have been crying in person. We don't want that human toll here, and we don't want to have to pay for their health care either as taxpayers, if we take it from the financial standpoint. The Cortezi list requires a hazmat inventory, and here's, for example, an open hazmat site on GeoTracker at Valco. I also want to let you know about an EPA rule that requires that renovations, that homes that were renovated prior, that were built prior to 1978 that are renovated...
Can video show the projector, please?
Need to be lead tested and remediated. Now, that's only for, it's called the EPA Lead Safe Rule. But, you know, it doesn't apply to new construction. So, you know, if you're tearing down a house and you want to replace it, you could send all this lead dust to your neighbors and have all this lead on your soils. Additionally, we are repurposing commercial sites, and I wanted to say that, you know, one of them, for instance, is over by Kiku Sushi on Deansay and Prospect. And here's, by the way, here's some stuff on Bayview. And I would ask that we really do some due diligence before allowing any demolition on those properties, because we need to protect, not only the future residents at that property, but also the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rhoda. And next, we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So first, for the record, the housing element public meetings started a year ago in November. The first public meeting was Housing Commission. I attended that, and I attended every meeting with every commission or council except for one and a half in the past year. It really bothers me to hear and to read, you know, over two dozen letters, people that are not commenting correctly on the process. We had a consultant. We had staff. That was the first point of contact for a reason. Consultant was to help the staff, their original meeting. We need help with engagement. They were given ideas. Sure, we'll do that. They never did a single one. Never. I don't remember the names or the voices of the people who've spoken tonight, with the exception of maybe two, at these meetings. When you're in a Zoom meeting, which was what they primarily were, you can see on the top how many participants there are. There were rarely more than six participants in these meetings, yet these letters say that these people attended several or most of the meetings that were about housing element. I question that because I know. Also, in those meetings, there wasn't a single meeting, maybe a single couple, where our consultant was not questioned as to their process and their efficiency. Again, they didn't take recommended engagement suggestions. So it's consultant and staff work on this first, then it goes to Housing Commission, then it goes to Planning Commission, then it goes to City Council. City Council is the last people to hear about this and to get the site selection. Again, a lot of problem in the letter and in some of the speakers, the stakeholder group never met. So the stakeholder group did not start and then get stopped. That is a false statement, written and spoken. I was selected for that stakeholder group. I know it never happened, and if you really attended meetings, you would also know that. State control is already occurring, and why is that? Because we have individuals and large groups of people that have supported the bills that are doing that to our city. Regardless of housing element, the state of California has control. I have so much more to say, but you just, you know, and the suggestions in the letter of how to fix this problem of not getting there in time would only delay it because it's starting over.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is Joseph Filaran. Welcome, Joseph. Our next speaker after Joseph is Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident. Tonight, I'm here to express my concern about the delays in developing the state-required housing element. My understanding is that Cupertino will be the very last city to submit in the Bay Area for its housing element, certainly not what we, as residents, expect from our city council. I'm frankly baffled by the city council management of this process. They approved a consultant who set forth a reasonable proposal and timeline, but that was immediately disrupted by council mismanagement. Based on my experience, setting up a stakeholder group with a clearly defined parameters made sense. Instead, council decided to assign Councilmember Kitty Moore, Vice Mayor Chow, Planning Chair Stephen Scharf, and Housing Chair Tessa Parrish to develop a completely different community outreach process, despite their lack of experience in this kind of community engagement. I participated in all three of the community outreach programs from May to September. They were informative, but most of the attendees were already fully aware of the housing challenges in our community. And it was not the least bit obvious how these meetings would be linked to the other components of the housing element. There's no way that this council will have public review and submission to HCD by January 31st, or by January 31st, which invokes the builder's remedy. Why isn't this housing element the highest priority of this city council? You spend a lot of time on other matters, which are not nearly as important, but not little, but very little time on the housing element per se, particularly in the public process. Please move ahead and make it your highest priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Our next speaker is Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. My name is Connie Cunningham. I am a housing commissioner, speaking for myself only. I'm a 34-year resident, and as a Harvard woman myself, I think I can tell this joke and get away with it, right? It goes like this. You can tell a Harvard man, but you can't tell him much. So I had that joke told to me about me, so I thought I could pass it along. Since I came on the Housing Commission four years ago, I have seen enough to know that this housing element will likely not solve any of the housing problems of our vulnerable residents, including seniors, students, families, teachers, and workers. It follows on eight years of little housing production, especially affordable housing, and it is not a strong plan. I have two concerns. I am concerned that I have not heard any discussion yet by Planning Commission or City Council about the willingness to change existing policies. City Council about the willingness to change existing policies. Part of the production challenge for housing is having the right mix of policies to encourage home builders to work here. On May 19th, I attended the Environmental Review Committee to encourage Council Member Moore and Planning Commissioner Chair Scharf to talk to applicants about building larger projects. One applicant at those meetings later did suggest building more units, but I have read that on September 13th, the Planning Commissioner approved their original six units rather than a larger multifamily apartment building. On October 18th, the City Council unanimously approved that smaller project. On September 8th, our Housing Commission, signed unanimously, sent a letter to the City Council asking to be included in a variety of activities to provide advice to council. In addition to the production of housing, we asked to be involved in activities for the preservation of existing affordable housing and activities for creating renter protections for existing residents with a goal of no replacement, displacement, excuse me. I have given my opinion in many meetings that the Hamptons should not be part of the housing element because hundreds of families will be displaced. Secondly, I am concerned because Cupertino will be the last city in our county to release its draft housing element. We have heard so much about retaining local control, but by being late, Cupertino is subject to the builder's remedy on February 1st and loses local control. Projects built under that remedy will require affordable housing, which is good, but they will not be required to follow other local rules. It is scary to see the specter of losing local control. I urge you to do these three things to meet the law: revive the stakeholder group, reduce reliance on pipeline projects, increase the buffer, and please add more sites in the heart of the city. This area has major corridors, bike, ped, lanes, stores, schools, and transit. Thank you for this time to talk.
Thank you, Connie. Our next speaker is Emma.
Hi. Hi, I'm Emma. I'm a resident of Cupertino and a student for, at Dianza College, and I'm very new to community activism. This is my first time ever giving a public comment, so I'm very nervous, so please excuse that. But I'm here on behalf of myself and no other group, but because I have concerns for the housing, what's the word, the housing thing? I'm not the most informed on everything going on, but I think that from all of the comments that you've heard today, it's very clear that a lot of people in Cupertino are very concerned about the state of this progress and that there's a very fast approaching deadline and that we need to do something about this. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emma. Our next speaker is Neil.
Hello, mayors and city council. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. I was going to read the letter that I left on in front of all of you all from Cupertino For All. Instead, I'm just going to go ahead and read from the heart some notes I took down. So first, I just wanted to address and acknowledge the fact that several people had to already leave in the room who were not able to speak tonight. I don't know necessarily what they were going to say, but I know that they were going to press this council on making sure that we're acting in a fast manner. It's really important for us to capture voices that we disagree with. A prime example of that, Planning Commissioner Stephen Scharf just said that the builder's remedy is triggered by not rezoning in time. That's not true. It's triggered by not having a compliant housing element, which we don't have and we will not have come February 1st. And so the ability to actually accept other people's points of view is something that the city council has really struggled with throughout this process. To Lisa, who said the stakeholder group never met, that's true because it was axed. The consultant, EMC, brought forward recommendations for a diverse stakeholder group that included Dianza College students, people who have been homeless or housing insecure, people who currently live in affordable housing, and the group was dismantled. Instead, like a commenter already said, there was a group put in its place who was on it: Stephen Scharf, Planning Commission, and the city council members. That is not representative of the community, and you're seeing the effects of that right now. Because you have ignored crucial voices that are right now speaking in this room, well, the reality is that we are kind of screwed. Now, it's not a question of whether or not we are, but how long. So let's talk about the timeline real quick. We have to come up with a draft, and then there is a 30-day period where the public is able to engage. There's another 10 days where we get to incorporate feedback. That's 40 days. There's another 90 days where, after you submit, HCD will review your housing element. That's a total of 130 days. 130 days from now is past February. So we're looking at March, April, and onward, and that's if we submitted today. We're not going to submit today. We don't even have a consultant anymore. We're short on staff. We've pushed people out. And so right now, we're in this position where it's really crucial that we work together and listen to each other's voices in order to make this happen. We are dead last, so for the commenter saying we've done a great job, that's not true. It's not true. We've done a bad job. And you can't just blame EMC. Los Gatos had EMC, and they have submitted a draft on time. So what gives with us? Why can't we do it? There are many small cities like Emeryville and Alameda that submitted on time, and not just that, but they were certified on the first draft, and it's because they acted in good faith and they cared about affordable housing. So my message is pretty simple. Let's just do better. Also, last note, we have nothing against pipeline projects. Pipeline projects are great. You just can't rely on 80% of your housing numbers to be pipeline projects unless you can show feasibility.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gilbert.
Thank you, Mayor and the Cupertino City Council for listening to me tonight and also to the Madam City Manager as well, too. My name is Gilbert Wong. I am speaking as myself, not as a former Cupertino mayor or for Hildianza Community College trustee. I was not going to speak tonight, but it really made me want to speak, listening to the first few speakers. As an elected official since 2007, sitting up on that dais, I thought that the right thing was to serve, and that's what I really cherish. But I see more and more elections that more folks are making it more difficult to serve, especially since President Trump started the MAGA movement. I'm just very disappointed with Councilwoman Kitty Moore attacking our Sheriff's Department, attacking our Local 21 Union, who are volunteering their own time, not on city time, to elect good people in, to make outrageous attacks on Twitter and on social media, and threatening jobs of the Sheriff's Department, our city employees, as well as other stakeholders, as well as the chamber, is totally uncalled for. I want to sit in the back and just observe, but I have to call the councilwoman out because this is totally wrong. I really urge that we not enrage in social media that cause false pretenses. I urge voters to look on each website and look at what this council has done, which is not good, and that we definitely need change. We have hard planners who work really hard. We have people in IT that helps and make this room very successful for people to watch, but instead, the city council asked the Sheriff's Department to come here to protect us, protect us from what, if you look at this room, there's really nobody here to attack the people who are in the room or on the council. I even was outside the room and heard city staff that there might be people rushing the dais. This is totally uncalled for, and in the years that I've been on the city council, it really shames me to see this by using political might. Again, Better Cupertino is a special interest group. They're an unregistered group on the municipal that this council passed, which is an illegal ordinance, and illegal when voters is suing our city in federal court for this. And I think that voters need to know the truth and are these candidates and the sitting council should be here or not. Please vote on or before November 8th, and I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert. And I understand we have, I apologize to my colleagues as well as the members of the public with regard to the timing, but it did seem like we're getting pretty close. And so we have two more email comments, and we'll ask our city clerk to read those into the record. Madam City Clerk, or up to three minutes of them, I should say.
Yes, Mayor. This email is from Stanley Young, Representative/Organizer IFPTE Local 21. Dear Cupertino City Council, I'm writing on behalf of the International Federation of Professional and Technical Engineers Local 21, Cupertino Employees Association IFPTE Local 21 CEA in the city of Cupertino. Our union members have worked diligently and tirelessly throughout the course of the global pandemic, providing essential services to the residents. We are proud to represent Cupertino, we are proud to represent public employees who serve the public. IFPTE Local 21 CEA is concerned by the recent negative comments and accusations made by Councilmember Kitty Moore on Twitter and Nextdoor towards our membership. The comments are unprofessional, unacceptable, and inaccurate. Councilmember Moore has accused IFPTE Local 21 CEA of buying politicians. Our union members are engaging in our democracy by volunteering for our endorsed candidates in their spare time after work hours. I was shocked and disappointed that an elected official would share such hurtful statements to the employees that helped make the city of Cupertino run. In our opinion, the rhetoric she used is false, alarming, and a form of union busting to intimidate our members and their union from participating in the political process. Our members have First Amendment rights and the freedom to express themselves politically. I am happy to speak with any of you about this matter, but I would highly encourage you to denounce and take objection to the negative comments made by Councilmember Moore towards the city employees that make up our membership. Sincerely, Stanley Young. And the second email that I have is from Caitlin Wong. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members, this election has caused me to get many very bad and untrue mailers delivered to my house. I was very upset to see a big collection of lies being said by several former Cupertino mayors, including Richard Lowenthal and Rod Syngs. In talking to people that came to my house to talk to me and my husband, I learned that Rod Syngs was one former mayor that caused the city to waste about half a million dollars by firing the city attorney, Hom, who sued the city. I also received a letter from the County Voter Register explaining that three candidates, Claudio Bono, Sheila Mohan, and Joseph Frohn refused to sign the campaign spending limit agreement, and then I saw on Nextdoor that they have collected huge contributions from many special interest groups that want to elect city council members that will do them special favors, that they can make more money and hurt our city more. I also learned that Joseph Frohn was one of the people responsible for closing Regnar Elementary. Even though my children went to Sedgwick Elementary, I feel bad for the parents who now have to drive their children to Lincoln Elementary or send them to private schools. Joseph Frohn was also the cause of former city manager Deb Fang leaving after only two years, and he also contributed to the city attorney, Hom, being fired. I wish that the city council could issue a statement that explains the lies that the former mayors are telling, so voters understand that they are lying just to try to get back control for the companies that are hurting Cupertino. Thank you, Caitlin Wong. And that is all, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and we are on to reports by council and staff at this time. I don't remember if the subject is brief reports on council member activities and brief announcements, and this was placed in as an ability for brief responses as well as requests by the city council to follow up. And I want to ask our city attorney to speak, you know, briefly on what the scope of these responses could potentially be when we're talking about the context of oral communications. The other thing for this set of brief reports, it also includes activities by council members since our last regular council meeting. In this case, it would have been from October 18th until today that are not part of our regular committee assignments. And so, Chris, with regard to that first question, if it's in response to some clarifying issues of oral communications, what is the scope of what can be discussed here?
Yeah, so, I mean, there are a limited number of non-agenda items that the council can discuss. There, one of those items is characterized as a brief response to public comment, and the general guidance about what that response should consist of is, you know, a council member refer a speaker to staff. It can refer the speaker to appropriate reference material to answer the question. It can request staff to report back at a future meeting, and it can, you know, consistent with the council's Rules of Prestige or Direct Staff to place a matter on a future agenda. You know, aside from that, you know, the other non-agenda items that can be discussed under the Brown Act are brief reports by a council member on their own activities, again, referring an item to staff or asking a question for clarification. And, you know, again, sort of the guidance emphasizes that all of these exchanges should be brief, and there should not really be extended back-and-forth discussion between council members and staff or a member of the public or amongst themselves.
Great. Thank you very much, Chris. And so I'm going to lead by example on this one and try to get through as fast as I can. There were just so many items since October 18th, but I will, in brief, follow up to what's been discussed tonight in oral communications. I do ask that staff come back to us at a future meeting, hopefully November 15th, to give us a good update on what's been going on with regard to the housing element. I know a lot of work has gone into it, so it's important for us to have that summary and consistent work. So really, really quickly, Compassion Week on October 19th, we made care packages and we wrote personal notes for unhoused teens with supervisor Semidien and staff over the Saratoga Library. Later that day, a number of staff members, myself and Councilmember Willie, spoke with more than 20 neighbors regarding an unhoused resident near Portal. I attended the USD State of the District on October 20th. On October 21st, on Friday, that was Pizza and Politics. I spoke as one of the mayors. On October 22nd, Councilmember Willie and I met with Boy Scouts in City Hall, who were conducting an energy capture-related project for household water flows. And then later that evening, that's a Saturday, we celebrated the 50th anniversary of the Bay Area Telugu Association. The Allen Road groundbreaking was on 10/25, which will include a BMR housing unit in addition to nine other units on Foothill as well as Stevens Creek Boulevard. Two Medical Reserve Training Corps events happened for our medical volunteers on October 25th and October 27th. There was a Public Safety Forum on October 27th that was really well-attended, really well-done by our Public Safety Commission and our safety officers. The Silicon Valley Chamber of Commerce invited me to speak on the 26th, along with the mayors of San Jose and Santa Clara in the morning. The Her Story II exhibit opened on October 28th at the Cupertino Library. And there was a Cupertino Library Foundation event thanking Henry Sang for his work on the library expansion, and also thanking Claire Vareseio for her years of work as our county community librarian. She's moving on and upward through the Joint Powers Administration. So I just wanted to share with that, share that with the public as to my own activities since October 18th. And suffice it to say, I think we're all very, very busy with various community events and actions. So would anyone like to go next with regard to brief updates since October 18th? And I'll go with our Zoom function here. I see Councilmember Willie has his hand raised on the dais, and then we'll go to Councilmember Way after that.
Yeah. Brief. I'm not sure that's possible, but that's what I have to work with. I have to say I'm a little bit disappointed in what I'm hearing tonight. My number-one priority for being up here is resident engagement. I started off with two complete sets of park walks, going to every park in Cupertino, notifying residents, "Come and talk to me." That was followed up by town hall meetings. Again, seeking community input. And that was followed up by community roundtable events. To chastise us at this late stage is very disappointing. One of those roundtable events, community roundtable for community to discuss and let me know, was specifically on housing. I remember very clearly Resident Rhoda Frye was there. Connie Cunningham might have been there, I'm not sure. The people that are chastising us tonight never emailed and said, "Would you come and talk with us? Let us discuss the housing element." Last Saturday, I met with students that asked to meet with me in the lobby of City Hall. I will do everything I can to be available for the community to talk to me, to get back with me, and then when I sit up here and people come and chastise us without having to, would you do that to your children? Clearly, would you do that to your children? Shame on you- Shame on you, children, even though I didn't talk with you. So, I'll leave it at that. We have had council meetings go until 2:00 in the morning. We have never prevented residents from talking to us. We are here to listen to everyone in Cupertino. Deansa College students, seniors, low-income, everyone in Cupertino. And I, it sounds to me like some people in this audience don't seem to understand that we are here to listen to you, but you have to come to us. We can't go and knock on 20,000 doors every month. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Willie. We'll go to Councilmember Wei next. Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'll be really brief. You stayed a lot of events, which I missed a lot because I was on a road trip, but I did go to a couple of events, especially the public safety forum. It was so well-done, and our staff worked really hard, and everyone was there, so it is very impressive. And I did go to a, I don't know, Diwali celebration in Tempo, and it's really delightful to see, you know, cross-cultural celebrations, and I just feel that we live in a diverse community with lots of different people in here. We are lucky in Cupertino to call Cupertino our home, and council members are here to listen to everyone, and I do hope that, I am very hopeful that we will listen to each other and really work through this housing element, and let's work it together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei, and I'll check in to see if either Vice Mayor Chow or Councilmember Moore, Vice Mayor has her hand up, so Vice Mayor.
Hi, thank you. And thank you for clarifying the proper time to provide brief response to public comment, which usually every council has done. It seems the public is confused about the housing element process and schedule, and some people have been spreading misinformation because of the election, unfortunately, but I think the city manager's office could provide some clarifying information in the schedule, then that would be very helpful. And I would like to request, for a third time, for a subcommittee of the city council on the homeless situation in general throughout this winter, and in particular for the individual at Portal Park. So I hope the council can consider that. And I attended most of the events the mayor has mentioned, so I'm not going to repeat that, but in particular, we did the groundbreaking of Betta Brothers, which is a third groundbreaking. I have participated on this council. We have not rejected any housing project, so I'm proud of that. And we attended the Compassion Week hosted by, the Compassion, we attended the event hosted by Joe Smithian to prepare care packages for mobile homeless providers, and I'm glad I talked to them and I find out, in fact, the best way to help an housed individual is not to directly give them any goods or food or money, but donate them to the many, many service agencies to help them, so that the agencies can engage them and connect them with services that they really need. There are shelters and food available through these agencies, so please help donate the goods to the agencies, so that they can, they know the best how best to help housed individuals. Thank you for all the residents who are so compassionate and trying to help. That's help the best way, that's actually helping and not harmful to the people who are, we are trying to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow, and Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I attended some of the same events that you mentioned, including the Allen Row groundbreaking, the Betta Brothers site. Also, on October 27th, I attended the Hidden Treasures fundraiser at the Senior Center and found some really neat items. If you've never been, it is definitely worth visiting. And also, on October 26th, I attended the Public Safety Forum. I really am excited about this one because there is an excellent presentation regarding the crime statistics for the city, and it's available online. You can see the video and the PowerPoint presentations, they're all available there. And with regards to the housing element, it sounded as though we could make a request for a future item at this point, is that true? Because I think people would like to hear an update for what happened and what got us to this point. I think that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks very much, Councilmember Moore, and I take that request as a reiteration of the request that I had made as well, so looking forward to getting that update. We are on to item number five. Oh, I did want to comment briefly with regard to the comment on the ordering of speakers, because that's been consistent throughout the entirety of the last two and a half years, right? And this is a rather unusual situation. We said on November 1st, 2022, and we haven't had this many public speakers ever since we came back live earlier in this year. And so, in the interest of what is, you know, become our norm, and I think will probably change in February, because the governor's rules have been declared as being lifted at the end of February, barring, I think, any other, you know, increased pandemic conditions. But we have been calling on Zoom, because that's where the majority of people have been, and so that's certainly something that we can consider as, you know, situations change and things go in the constant flux. But we're certainly, you know, I think we can make a good assertive statement here that we're not trying to exclude anyone with regard to the commentary process. And so, thank you very much for, you know, everyone's comments, frankly, and, you know, it is always a work in progress that we are taking the privilege of undertaking, and we appreciate all of you for being here and commenting as well. So item number five, we have committee assignments, and again, these are our formal committee assignment report-outs that occur at the end of the year. And so, to give people a bit of a pre-socialization, as we all know, there's an election coming up in one week. The results of those elections will then be transferred over a month later on December 8th, I believe, is when we're planning on the transfer. And we're going to have committee assignments at that point with regard to the special meeting, so the then-mayor is going to ask the council to provide committee assignment proposals, and then the mayor will make a set of selections. And so, those are the committee assignments that we're reporting out right now on item number five. And so, this will be a couple of minutes each, and I'll go to the Zoom function to see if anybody would like to report out. I do see Councilmember Moore, your hand is still raised. Did you want to report on the committee assignments initially? I see Councilmember Wei also with a hand raised as well. And so, Councilmember Moore, you seem to be a bit surprised. Was that a residual hand, or?
It was residual, but I'll go first.
Okay, great.
Sure. Okay, so, let's pull my papers up. So, we had the Audit Committee meeting on October 24th. That committee, for people who've been following the changes with it, used to meet quarterly, now we meet monthly and go over the monthly treasurer's report, and it's actually worth coming in to have a listen, because we have a financial update from Chandler Asset Management Group, and it's always, always informative and worth seeing. So, of other interest, the City Hall Subcommittee met, oh, I'm sorry, the ERC group met, and we looked at a housing project at Prospect and Deansa Boulevard, which looks like it's about 34 units, and made a determination on whether it needed an MND or an EIR. And that's it, thank you.
Great, thanks very much, Councilmember Moore. Next, we have Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul.
Yep, welcome.
I have one commission meeting, is the Valley Water Commission meeting. We, you know, review the future projects, and still the concentration is on how can we, you know, save water and get people to really act, and I know our city is working closely with Valley Water, and, but even with the rent today, we're still in a real serious drought. So, yeah, it is very good to attend those meetings and bring our practices, and Cupertino is doing very well. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much, Councilmember Wei. Next, we have Councilmember Willie.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, boy, I got my, my happy shoes back on. Silicon Valley Clean Energy has our next meeting this coming week, so I can't do that, but I would like to revisit, very briefly, the meeting that I had with the group of students for which Mayor Paul also joined. This was 4th and 5th graders that wanted to show us their project about how to recapture some energy. Here we are in climate change, and how can they recapture some energy? And they focused on the water pressure at houses or businesses, and if you don't need all the water pressure that the water company provides, reclaim some of that, so that your water pressure would be slightly reduced, but you'd then generate energy with this. They made a small prototype, hooked it up to their water hose, and by the small wheel spinning, is decreasing the pressure coming out of the hose, and it actually reclaimed nine watts. That idea, that inspiration, who else thought about that? I learned things, they learned things, we had a great discussion. It was supposed to be one hour, and we were out in the city lobby for almost two hours. I'm so inspired by this next generation and them coming to us and saying, "Hey, let's talk, let's show you guys what our ideas are, and tell us what you think of them." Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie, and I will go to Zoom to see if Vice Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Chow, you're next.
I, on the 16th of December, I attended the Santa Clara Recycling Waste Reduction Committee meeting, representing the West Valley Cities, and we accepted the fiscal report and looked at the fiscal aging self-evaluation by the City of Morgan Hill, and they just transferred the fiscal aging role from Santa Clara. Santa Clara County will also evaluate their, do their self-evaluation. And then, I proposed for the committee to consider an initiative for high schoolers to use reusable utensils at school cafeterias. The next meeting will likely be December, not likely, will be December 1st. And then, on the 27th, I attended the Santa Clara County Joint Powers Authority Library Committee, and we accepted the fiscal report. The library has $6 million extra revenue estimated, and there is a $39 million unrestricted ending funding, end funding balance. And we had the end-of-the-year service presentation that was wonderful, what they have done, and one of the accomplishments they mentioned is the Cupertino's library expansion. And they are pushing a library card that people can write their own message on, on the card, so they have a campaign to get more people to sign up, to get library cards. The next meeting will be January 26th. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. Okay, so, I had three committee meetings. One was the VTA SSTPO, that's the Safety, Security, Transit Planning and Operations Meeting, as well as the Audit Committee meeting, which Chair Moore of the Audit Committee very capably and succinctly summarized. I won't add to that, other than to say that it was a very, very good committee meeting, and proud of the work that we've done over the years to make sure that fraud and security financially are, you know, combated. West Valley Mayors and Managers Meeting is something that Manager Wu and I attended, and I think that, very briefly on that one, it, okay, so Southern California went through the entire housing element process last year, and essentially, the vast majority did not get their elements in, approved on time. And so, what we're finding in the West Valley Mayors and Managers Meeting is that the expectation is very similar. I mean, the expectation, you know, that's one take-home that I wanted to be able to put into perspective for a lot of people, you know, because I think it's fairly timely and something that we were discussing there. VTA SSTPO, I only have a couple of months left. I have a month and a week left in eight years on council, and I feel very strongly about this. We need to make sure that we have a county-wide transit system that's built out. We were supposed to have a transit system from 40 or 50 years ago, that was supposed to be, you know, a wheel and hub, spoken, you know, hub, wheel and spoke, you know, system, it was never built out. West Valley has no transit, okay? We do not have a light rail system. Now, the VTA SSTPO, we're going to have a special meeting coming up. We did talked about, we did talk about technology, you know, the technical types of things that we can be looking at in the future, and I think that it's critically important that we realize that, right now, VTA is working on trying to get a five-mile extension of the, of the BART system into downtown San Jose, into Deardon Station. And the current estimate for that is $9 billion. Okay, they're going to the federal government and asking for a 20% match with regard to the funding, and so, the federal government said, "We don't think you can get it done in about seven," and so that has increased to about $9 billion. So, you know, we're going to have a massive drill, and it's going to be something that we can use within the county, and if you're really thinking about the housing crisis, if you're really thinking about interconnecting, and you take at face value the idea that these are interwoven problems, you know, when we have, you know, a former mayor coming in here and talking, you know, this and that, but was actually the person that I was sitting next to, I think where Councilmember Moore was sitting, you know, eight years ago, who said, "Late at night, let's put 2 million square feet of office over here," and basically triggered all of this, I think we really need to start thinking about how we're going to get people from point A to point B in a calm, cohesive manner. And this is something that I feel very strongly about. The VTA SSTPO will be talking about transit technology, and there will be a special meeting, and thankfully, they're having that special meeting before I term out. Hopefully, we can, you know, start to socialize this thoroughly, and that's, you know, the report-out that I would like to give, because of the fact that you can talk about trying to build your way out of this. You can talk about things like the builder's remedy, which, you know, incidentally, I think there are some really good things with regard to inclusionary zoning there, but if you're talking about really, you know, solving your economic woes of the Central Valley and getting people to where, you know, there is truly affordable housing, and you're looking at the numbers, you're talking about transit. This is an investment for longer in the future. So, thank you very much, that's my committee assignment for, report-out for November 1st, and we are on to our next item number six, that is Subcommittee Assignments, and I think that someone alluded to subcommittees, I forget, was it Councilmember Moore? And so, we have a few subcommittees that are out there, and I know that Councilmember Willie and I probably have some report-outs on Bub Road Subcommittee, and there is also a City Hall Subcommittee, I believe, and a couple of others. Are there any of my council colleagues that wish to report out on activities on any of these subcommittees ever since our last meeting on October 18th? Councilmember Moore.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Lower my hand. So, on October 21st, the City Hall Subcommittee, which is myself and Councilmember Willie, met with staff, and so far, since August, we've met on various topics regarding the City Hall, including structural analysis, the EOC, cost-location, and options, and that turned out to be a terrific meeting, where we found another location for the EOC over in the Torrey Annex, which saved us about $500,000, and provides some flexible space for the EOC to be relocated there, which we're really excited about, and we approved money for that remodel. We also went over programming requirements for the City Hall parking, and lastly, our recommendations will be coming to the council, I believe, at our next meeting, so that's pretty exciting. And also, on October 28th, the CEP, the Community Engagement Plan Subcommittee met, and we have met, and you can look at these meetings on the Cupertino YouTube channel. We met March 30th, April 7th, April 25th, May 16th, June 6th, July 25th, September 16th, and lastly, October 28th. Each of these meetings were about two hours, except for the last meeting. This one had a summary and let us know that we are not continuing on with EMC, staff informed us of this, and we planned a wrap-up meeting for the CEP, which would be in the first week of December. There was some confusion, I think, from members of the public, what the role of the CEP was, and it was to, largely to ensure our community engagement was, would ensure that we're following. and it was to, largely to ensure our community engagement was, would ensure that we're following AFFH, Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing. And so, we've met for about 15 hours. Want to point out that I do really appreciate people showing their interest at this point. When the first survey was conducted, only about seven people took it. And the Planning Commission, Chair Scharf and myself, we advocated to staff to add another survey, to talk about many different topics. We actually looked at a few different surveys from different cities and came up with one on our own and suggested it to some staff members. We had a very productive meeting. Staff liked that idea, and they worked on a survey to push out to the public, and that survey had 205 responses. The last CEP meeting has, within the meeting minutes, you'll find the survey responses, which are summarized, so you don't need to go through such a long document, but you'll get a sense for what the, a wider swath of the committee was interested in with regards to the housing element. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. I don't see any hands raised on Zoom for Subcommittee Report Outs, but let me go, actually, I see Vice Mayor Chow, but Councilmember Willie, did you want to, I think you were indicating that you were wanting to speak on the Subcommittee, but did you want to go in? Okay, before I call on Vice Mayor. All right, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Paul. So, Mayor Paul and I are on the Bub Road Subcommittee, where we're looking at additional housing sites in our city, in our community. And Bub Road was kind of glossed over by city staff, but yet, it has 27 acres. And so, we met, we discussed on how we should approach the property owners and the vision, a vision rather than just incremental things, a vision for Bub Road. And so, to me, the most significant thing is that we approached the first property owner, which is the vacant office building on Bub Road, and gave them our material, if you will, on Thursday. Surprise, Monday morning, a reply letter saying, yes, we want to be included. Here is something that can help us rely less on pipeline projects if we can establish more property owners, find more property owners that are interested. And it's at an area that's close to 85, close to 280, close to Deans College. The possibilities, I think, are just endless. Could it be student housing? Could it be senior housing? Could it be low-market rate housing? Could it be walkable, bikeable area? Absolutely. So, I'll leave it at that. Things look good.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Councilmember Willie, and I'll go ahead and move this to Vice Mayor Chow this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore, for report on the CEP. I'd like to add that we also requested, in the next meeting, to discuss a possible proposal to the council to continue the Subcommittee as a Community Engagement Committee, because this committee has been a venue for a lot, a lot of residents throughout the housing element process to come and express their concerns. And then, it seems to be necessary until the housing element is certified. And also, at the meeting, Planner Pugh mentioned that the Cupertino's affirmatively furthering fair housing outreach was praised by the consultant for the Santa Clara Regional Planning Collaborative, Ria and Drisco, at one of their collaborative meetings. So, this has been used as a good model to follow. And the stakeholder meetings that was proposed by EMC was not used by any other city or even cities who work with EMC. So, many, a member of the public might not know. So, we are doing our best to adopt the model that does the best job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. And, you know, I'll just follow on what Councilmember Willie was saying with regard to the Bub Road, you know, Subcommittee. I want to add very briefly that I think it's just so critical that everyone pulled together at this time. I agree with a lot of the commentary that was said in that regard. But a lot of the approach has always been about backyard protectionism. And so, when you hear about Bub Road, you also hear about people in that local neighborhood saying, oh, it's going to be so congested. But the thing is, if you put it anywhere, it's going to get more congested, right? So, ultimately, you have to think about like what you're talking about, the bikability, the walkability, the various types of infrastructure pieces. We were very careful. You know, we made sure that, you know, Results Way, which was, you know, the consideration of our major stakeholder, was the one that we weren't, you know, kind of looking at. And so, we're looking at the east side of Bub Road at this point. So, and a couple of other areas too. So, I think that, you know, the work that we're doing is investigative at the end of the day. You know, if it gets added to the examination, great, you know? And I don't think it's appropriate for people necessarily to say, hey, look, you know, you're not doing this right thing, but then when we get closer to their backyards, they end up saying, oh, no, look at this congestion. So, you know, thank you for that work, thank you for bringing it up, and thank you for pushing. And I look forward to the next steps here so that we're taking a holistic view that's non-hypocritical, you know, throughout the entirety of the community. And that's something that we really need to be making sure that we do in order to ensure that we're approaching this with some integrity. Thanks very much. So, let's go to our next item. I believe that is a City Manager update. And Madam City Manager, you're on for item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. So, to follow up on the individual that, the unhoused individual on Portal, just wanted the community and council to know that we continue to coordinate ongoing outreach and engagement through the Santa Clara County Agencies, and we're really working with appropriate agencies to finalize the plans to provide proper services within the next few weeks. In regard to the housing element update, staff will be working on a information item to be brought back to council at the next meeting on November 15 to provide an update and where we are, and how can we get to a compliance stage. There were many events that I participated along with council, the groundbreaking, the, what did you call it, the Compassion Week and Public Safety Forum, so I won't repeat those. Do you want to highlight that a public works staff has been meeting with school representatives of busy intersections, focusing on the tri-school area? The meeting occurred during the morning drop-off times and provided opportunities to observe traffic flow and brainstorm with school administrators on what works and what doesn't work. This is an eye, this is an intention towards future adjustment to help alleviate traffic congestion. These meetings have been occurring weekly with a different location addressed each week. This is for the community to note, and I'll end my report with a happy note. So, I'm pleased to announce that after an exhaustive and extensive research to find our first budget manager, our very own Thomas Liao has already accepted an offer. Please welcome me, join me in welcoming Thomas into his new role. That's my report. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, City Manager Wu. And, yeah, great hire, great promotion, I guess you'd say. Item number eight is the City Manager's Office, the City Work Program Update, and we're very proud of being able to deliver this work program update here. This, I understand, is Q4 of last fiscal year. And so, we're going to get rounding out of what our prior work program, you know, accomplished. And of course, the Q1 update, I think, when is that coming for? Will that be before December 6th, pick an arbitrary date?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Paul. So, as many of you have known that this is my early tenure with the city, typically, a Q4 update would be brought to the council, probably late summer, early fall. We're a bit delayed, so this will wrap up the prior fiscal year work plan. Astrid will provide a detailed presentation. The Q1 update will be sent to council via an informational memo, probably in two weeks.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for getting everything on track.
Thank you. Without further ado, I'm going to introduce to Astrid to walk us through the highlights of these Q4 update.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I actually did just want to clarify that we are doing a highlight of Q1 of fiscal year 2223. So, we're doing a highlight of the top 15 programs. The memo for Q4, which will be provided to council later this week. So, the dashboard is already updated with Q4, and the memo will be going out later this week.
Perfect.
With that, let me, let me share my screen.
So, just to clarify, Astrid, we had that upside down. So, the memo is going out for Q4, and here, we're actually looking at what's going on in Q1 for, I guess that would be July through September, correct?
Correct.
Okay, wonderful. Perfect.
Yeah. All right. Again, I'm Astrid Robles, Acting Assistant to the City Manager, here to provide an update on the fiscal year 2223 City Work Program. This year's City Work Program was adopted earlier this year in May with a total of 41 individual projects. 21 of these items are multi-year items that were carried over from the fiscal year 2122 City Work Program. The dashboard will be updated to reflect the first quarter information for this fiscal year for all projects at the end of the month. My presentation today includes a first quarter update on the top 15 items. Starting off, we have our top three items, which were tied for first place during the prioritization process. The numbers you see here throughout my presentation will be, reflect the number and priority order that they have. So, starting off for the ELI and BMR item, an RFP was sent out in August for the disposition of the Mary Avenue parcel to 500 affordable housing developers from the state's HCD list. The applications closed on October 18th, and one application was received. For Lawrence Midney, the Public Works Department is actively engaged in the specific plan process for the park, which includes engaging Cupertino residents and aims to establish an approved conceptual design, which is expected to come to the city council in early 2023, with completion and approval of the specific plan anticipated in fall of next year. For Memorial Park, the ponder purposing project is under construction and is anticipated to be completed in November 2023. An RFP for the amphitheater improvements project is anticipated to be released by early 2023, with public outreach and design to follow in spring. The city is actively working on the Memorial Park specific plan, which has involved numerous public meetings to gather input from the community. Next, we have the Homeless Jobs Program. Staff provided a thorough update on this project at the September 20th City Council meeting. In summary, West Valley Community Services has identified two new Cupertino residents to participate in the second year of this program. Both individuals moved into housing and began working as market and facility associates at the end of August and early September. Since then, one resident has resigned from the program, and West Valley is actively working to identify a new participant. For 10455 Torrey Avenue, the city council approved the design direction and next steps for this project at the October 18th City Council meeting. Design will continue into next year, and construction funding will be requested during the fiscal year 2324 budget process. For DOLA, staff has set up meetings with the DOLA community to begin the process for new trials. A community survey is being produced based on the four parks the DOLA community has requested. The survey will go live in early 2023 with the first two trials to begin shortly after the survey results are compiled. Trial length will be based on the adjacency to athletic fields or playgrounds. For seismic retrofits and upgrades, the City Council Subcommittee on City Hall has completed its work, and a proposed direction for this project will be presented to the city council at the next meeting on November 15. Next, for the study session on city-owned properties, staff anticipates beginning work on this project in the spring of 2023. For support of the unhoused, the city continues working with Homebase to prepare the city plan to end homelessness. Staff are currently reviewing results from the 2022 Santa Clara County Point-in-Time Count to identify future funding and resource needs to align with the county community plan to end homelessness. Provision Zero, an RFP was sent out in October in search of a consultant to develop a Vision Zero policy and action plan. The plan will guide policies and programs with the goal of eliminating fatalities on Cupertino roadways. Special emphasis will be placed on routes to and streets surrounding Cupertino schools. For Rina Housing Element, the city's Rina was approved by ABAG and the Department of HCD in December 2021. The city has been working on its sixth cycle housing element since October of last year. The city council authorized the site inventory on August 29, 2022. A draft housing element is anticipated to be presented to the public in early 2023. It is expected that environmental review will be completed, and the final housing element will be adopted in fall of 2023. And next, we have the Student Internship Program. This item is scheduled to be heard later this evening, where council will hear about the mayor's pilot summer internship program from this summer and discuss possible next steps. For the 5G ordinance, the study session is scheduled for the December 6th City Council meeting to gain input on a draft ordinance. Staff will work to incorporate the input into an ordinance for city council to consider in early 2023. For the Cupertino store, currently, staff are researching selecting merchandise, vendors, and fulfillment partners, as well as designing the website. This project is expected to launch sometime during the holiday season. Staff will be promoting the store via various marketing channels to our residents, businesses, and visitors once it goes live. And lastly, we have the General Plan item, which is currently on pause and will be evaluated once the housing element has been finalized. As stated in the beginning, and just to clarify, the updates for all of these items on the new fiscal year 2223 City Work Program will be available on the dashboard towards the end of the month, and you will be getting a memo of the wrap-up of fiscal year 2122 later this week. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much, Astrid. Very well done. And we're at 9:27 right now. Does anyone want to take a five-minute break before we get the consent calendar? I see a nod from our City Manager. We don't have comments on these summaries, Councilmember Willie?
No comment.
Unfortunately.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I know, I'm kind of bursting at the seams as well, because there are a lot of just great projects here. But this is just an update under these reports by council and staff. So, let's go ahead, we're at 9:28 right now. We'll reconvene at 9:33 in five minutes, and so, we will see you then. Thanks very much.